Good evening, welcome everybody. We'll start this evening with the roll call Suzanne.
Thank you. Mayor Levy.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Harvey.
Here.
Councilmember Carr.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
Councilmember Sonnier.
Here.
Councilmember Sawyer is absent. Councilmember Schaefer.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you Suzanne. If you all join me in the pledge of allegiance please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to agenda item number four. And we have a special presentation today. And Ms. Tobias, yeah, there's somebody has a cellphone if we could have them all turned off please.
Thank you.
It's not quite there yet. Okay.
Thank you Mayor, councilmembers, members of the audience. Do you want to do introductions up here in terms of the typical way we do them with addresses? Or should I proceed?
You can just proceed.
Thank you sir. There's a lot of things going on within the city of Woodland Park. Typically people don't hear about what's going on because we do a pretty good job of keeping things under control here. The people that are the first line around here in terms of maintaining order in our community are dispatchers. And so we're fortunate enough to have one of the representatives from the 911 board here to present award which Jenica was nominated for. So with no further ado, let's get started. On March 17th, Woodland Park Police Dispatcher Jenica Garrick answered to 911 from a frantic mother that had just returned home from the hospital with her son. He was not, he was unconscious and not breathing. Jenica was only on day 50 of training. She quickly calmed the caller, helped her get her son turned over and started CPR. Jenica's trainer was able to assist her with dispatching police fire and medical quickly, but Jenica was still having to multitask handling responder radio traffic and keeping the mother doing chest compressions at an appropriate rate. When EMS arrived on scene they were able to get a pulse and transport the patient to the hospital. This call was handled with the utmost customer service and kindness towards the mother. Jenica remained so calm that the trainer was only aware of the severity of the call due to Jenica raising her hand and snapping her fingers to get the attention of her trainer. This was also Jenica's first call requiring CPR. And again, it was day 50. Jenica is an outstanding dispatcher. She's got a great attitude about her job and is a model employee. The Woodland Park Police Department and the city of Woodland Park is honored to have Jenica as an employee. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ben Bills. I work for the El Paso Teller County 911 Authority Board. I'm the PIO. We'd like to present Ms. Jenica with her telecommunicator of the second quarter award. Her efforts are very much appreciated by both the El Paso Teller County 911 Authority staff and by the board. In addition to that award, she also receives, I'm not even going to take it out of here. She received a gift card of her choice to the restaurant of her choice so she'll be going to the melting pot. And another honor is that now she is in the running for, she may get to go to a conference because now she's in the running for telecommunicator of the year for the whole system. We have eight, eight 911 agencies. Woodland Park is one of them, so she'll go up against the next three telecommunications of the quarter and potentially can win telecommunicator of the year. So congratulations Jenica.
Okay, we move on to agenda item number five. And I think Suzanne has an addition or deletion.
Yes, thank you Mayor Levy. This evening we will be removing item C, pardon me, excuse me, 12C1 from the agenda. And City Attorney Smith will address the reasons.
Thank you Mayor and Council. Mayor and Council, that agenda item is the appointment of the Personnel Board. At this time, it is my recommendation that those positions be advertised. They were not, that slate was a slate that I came up with as your legal counsel and the city clerk came up with as your HR director because the Personnel Board serves a specific HR and legal function. So it makes perfect sense that we would come up with that slate. Having said that though, at least more than one councilmembers were interested in having those positions advertised and we can certainly do that. Doing so of course is no statement on the qualification of the slate that was before you, so I just want to make that perfectly clear and I'm happy to answer any questions on that.
Questions Council?
I have a question. How many board members are we expecting? Two?
There are three.
Alright, thank you. Anyone else? Thanks Erin. Thank you Suzanne. We'll move on to item number six in the consent calendar Suzanne.
Yes Mayor Levy, this evening the only item on the consent calendar is the approval of the minutes from the June 16th, 2016 Regular Council Meeting.
Questions Council? No, call for a motion. Second. Suzanne?
Thank you. Carr?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Sonnier?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you Suzanne. We have no unfinished business tonight and no ordinances on initial posting, so we'll move right to public hearings and Erin Smith.
Thank you Mayor. Ordinance 1285 is before you to define the term municipal office which is used in the charter and in the code section that accompanies that charter provision having to do with the Personnel Board. It is a limitation on who can serve on the Personnel Board. Both the charter and the code says that all members of the Personnel Board shall not hold any appointive or elective municipal office, but then does not go on to define those. So in order to define municipal office, so in order to give council the most latitude in terms of choosing the members of that Personnel Board, I've recommended that that term be defined by purposes of, for purposes of both the charter and the ordinance or the code and it is done so through this ordinance. The list of who is a municipal officer or holds municipal office was taken from your charter for the most part. If you read through the charter you will see that those offices that I've listed are those that are referred to as offices and serving in office. So that is the logic behind that list. I would point out that in section two of the ordinance, the city attorney has been left out. So I would recommend one minor amendment. And that is to add city attorney to section two of the ordinance. So section two, the second paragraph begins the term quote municipal office as used in this chapter means and is limited to the office of mayor and six councilmen and/or councilwomen, city manager, city clerk, city treasurer. Here I would insert city attorney, municipal judge and assistant municipal judge and that way it matches section one of the ordinance that's in front of you. May I answer any questions?
Erin, should this ordinance include the established or the makeup of the board? You've recommended three person board. Should that be included in this ordinance?
That is already in your code and charter.
In charter, okay.
Thank you.
Paul? Have we ever had use for such a committee or a board?
It's been quite some time since we've had the Personnel Merritt Board in place. I can tell you that it's not met in the nine years that I've been the city manager. It's my recollection that it existed though in 1997 to 2001, 2002 that timeframe. I don't know if it was ever called to execute its duties.
Thank you.
Erin, could you describe the duties of the Personnel Board?
The Personnel Board serves as an appeal board and makes a recommendation to the city council on personnel matters. So a disciplinary matter, personnel disciplinary matter can be appealed to the Personnel Board and then the Personnel Board makes a recommendation to the city council on which way to go on that particular disciplinary matter.
Could it also include an appeal of a termination?
It could as well. In certain cases, yes.
I, I just want to be respectful. I'm reading this book here and I would like to just say, we have a manager administrative system in place. And at the end of the chapter, it throws caution in the conclusion that this could become pretty touchy and put under extreme scrutiny in a court of law should it be for dismissal of people in the lower sectors of employment in the city, below city manager. And it is by circumventing the city manager and going to a board, it could create problems for us. And I'm concerned that we do what is right and not overstep our authority. And there's nothing that I wouldn't ask that's not outlined in this and I've read the chapter after it as far as your ability to put together this type of board. Are there written instructions in place to guide the council or the, the board as to how they make and determine decisions involving dismissal of personnel?
If, if it gets to that, there will be.
But there are none right now.
There will be, those would be formulated at the time. And you raise a very good point and this was something that the chart, very good point councilman, because this is something that the Charter Committee struggled a little bit with. We were advised by Tammy Tenoy who serves as general counsel to the Colorado Intergovernmental Risk Sharing Association. And she says, you know, having a personnel, Personnel Board is a, not the common way to deal with these matters and the form of appeal that the, that is used is not necessarily the most common way. So it may be that council could certainly consider in a future charter amendment question, the elimination of the Personnel Board. And I think that's a, that's a very good observation.
It is something that we considered in the year-long review of the charter is eliminating it, but it really came down to an economy of courses on whether we wanted to add that as yet another ballot initiative or ballot question. And that one seemed the most benign of those that we had discussed and that we left it in place.
But for purposes of tonight, a very narrow question is in front of you. And so I think it would be helpful to just move forward on this particular ordinance and define this term. And my recommendation is you adopt this ordinance following a public hearing. Thank you Mayor and Council.
Any other questions?
No, I'm just going to stick to the book.
We are in public hearing now if anyone else has comment on this issue. Sir, if you'd like to.
I just have a question.
Good. Come to the podium and give us your name and address and we'll try to answer your question for you.
Bob, I'll be with Matt Jackpot. How would this be different from the appealing to the State Labor Board?
This is a procedure that would pre, be prerequisite to that.
Okay, so if, if their appeal was denied by the city, they could still go to the State Labor Board?
Yeah, it certainly doesn't eliminate any of those remedies. It's really an extra remedy.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, if not, then call for motion to approve ordinance 1285. So moved.
Second.
With the insertion. I'm sorry with the correction to add the city attorney.
Yes.
Thank you Suzanne.
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Sonnier?
No.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-1, thank you.
Thank you Council.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to number 9B to consider the U-Pass Out Club application and welcome Sally Riley.
Thank you. Get the equipment up and running here in just a moment. Sorry, I did have it all set up, but it was turned off. In your packet is, for item 9B is a request by the U-Pass Saddle Club and Mary Jo Larson who is the event organizer for the upcoming 60th Youth Trail Stampede. This is a camping permit request that the staff report outlines that they are asking for six nights of camping at the Saddle Club property. And I'll show you the map here in a second. They are asking for noon on July 25th through August 1st, 3pm, which will cover their entire event. There are seven conditions or stipulations for this. First is the time period. Next is the designated location which I'll show you on the map. The number of units is limited to 80 trailers and campers. The types of units must be self-contained camper trailers, horse trailers, recreation camper vehicles, pickup trucks, campers. And that there are services provided. There will be no city and water, city sewer and water available. The event folks will have Porta-Jons on site as well. They will be responsible for all cleanup, onsite trash and debris. And if there are any complaints, we ask for the applicant to assist us in addressing any complaints. Lighting is restricted to downcast shades only and turned off at 9pm. The noise, if there's any noise, that would be subject to our current ordinance 9.14. And that all representations in the application that is attached to the staff report are made as valid. And just to point out on the site plan with the aerial, you're familiar with the Trout Creek access. If I can get my pointer to show up here. Yes, it disappears over it. I'm so sorry. Here's their access point, the rodeo arena, there'll be visitor parking for 90 spaces. The camping is at the north end of the site. And there is a blow-up or a detail of the camping layout as well as the parking area that Marty McKenna has laid out on the site. So with that, I, Marty is here who has helped with this layout as well as Mary Jo Larson who can answer any questions for you. Otherwise, we would recommend approval of this camping permit in conjunction with the youth trail stampede. Thank you.
Marty and Mary Jo, would you like to come forward?
And just to be clear.
Marty, before you start, I'm sorry.
Marty McKenna, 200 West Midland Avenue, 380 Hope Patrol.
Thank you.
Just to be clear, the camping, because it's a senior professional rodeo and it's 40 and over, these people, most of them will be retired. And so we wanted, the reason that we asked for six days, some of them will come a couple days early, some of them will come three or four days early to enjoy our surroundings. So there won't be 80 people camp there for six days. It will be a few this day, a few that day. And mostly, the rodeo will be Thursday, Friday and Saturday. So those will be most of the time. Some of them will just have a truck and trailer, they won't be camping. Some of them will have horse trailers with camping facilities.
Thanks. Mary Jo, why don't you introduce yourself first and we'll go from there.
Mary Jo Larson. And I'm, Marty and I are chairman of this rodeo. And I'd like to introduce Liz and John Denton back there. They're also on our rodeo committee. And he is a NSPRA sanctioned bulldogger contestant. And he is helping us on the end of the rodeo cowboy part. And it, we started with the seniors because they can come to town. They'll stay awhile, they'll spend some money, they're going to feed our economy.
They'll shop, dine and lodge.
And Neen goes here to help too. She's part of the old crowd. Anyway, if we can answer any questions about this, we're trying to make it a week-long rodeo atmosphere where we've solicited a lot of businesses. We're getting good response on our sponsorships and we're hoping that this will be an ongoing event again. It's our 60th Youth Trail Stampede rodeo.
And just to be clear, please, you're all invited. We are going to have a golf tournament on the 27th with a mixer afterwards. We are going to have a VIP with the cowboys at the Country Lodge on Thursday evening. Friday evening, we will be having the dance behind the youth and the rodeo three days. And please bring everyone and come join us.
And we would like to ask, while you're talking about extending our camping, could you also extend our dance hours for, till 10 o'clock so that?
You will be seeing the dance hours extension at the next council meeting.
Oh, okay.
Why not?
And one more thing and then I'm out of here. I would, I gave this to Suzanne. This is our sponsorship. We just, we just cordially invite the, if the city of Woodland Park would like to participate on a sponsorship, there it is, talk about it amongst yourselves, let us know if you would. Thank you very much.
Don't go anywhere, we might have some questions.
Okay.
I've got one. How many participants, participants are you expecting?
We're expecting between 150 and 200 participants. And because it's a three-day rodeo, it takes five rodeos to qualify for the national finals. And so because we have three rodeos in a row, we will gather a lot more participants because in three days, they can make three of their five. So that's why we did it a three-day rodeo.
Cool. That's very cool. Kenny?
I just, have, have we done this before Mary Jo?
It's the 60th.
The 60th, have we done it here before, right?
60 times.
Yeah, that's what I thought. So this is not new.
No, we have not had a rodeo for 10 years. It was 2006 was our last rodeo. So we have not had it for 10 years. But yes, it's our 60th.
Going to sound strange being from Brooklyn, but I love bringing back what Woodland Park is all about. Cowboys, cowgirls, rodeos, railroad, beef, timber. I'd like to see more rodeos.
Well, thank you. And you know, there's been a lot of discussion about how we need to decide who we are. Well, we already are somebody. I think that digging back into our past isn't a bad thing to try and revive that. So thank you.
Yes, yes, we are a Western town.
Oh, oh, there's going to be mutton busting, so if anybody's got grandkids.
Geez, even better.
2006, where was the event held?
Actually across from the cowhand, right at the Bergstrom Arena. That was the last one.
Go ahead, Val.
So obviously you're looking for not just participants but audience, right?
The rodeo, yes, and in 19, in 1947, the business people of Woodland Park got together and took their cars out to the Sandbar which is basically between Valley View and Apache. And they circled their cars and it's called rodeer. And that's where the word rodeo came from. And so in the circle of cars, they held a rodeo for the purpose of bringing people to the area. The next year, they had to decide whether to form a Chamber of Commerce or Saddle Club and because the rodeo was so successful, they formed the Saddle Club. And that's where the Woodland Park Saddle Club originated. And Bert Bergstrom sold them the land for $1 because he loved cowboys and he wanted to see them come to the area. And there's a rich, rich history with the Woodland Park Saddle Club, but that's where it originated. And the thing about business people putting on a rodeo is it's specifically for spectators to bring people into the area to shop, dine and lodge. It's not for the contestants. The contestants, well, show up and ride your horses, but this is really a show for the people.
May I ask what the extent of the PR approach has been so far?
Well, we got a late start. So we have, we have, everybody is on board to try and help promote it. We have just made a deal to get the posters, the banners. We have contacted the new country station, mountain, sorry, anyway, them. So we're waiting to hear from that. We have, we have talked to the 125th briefly. So that's, at this point, it's.
I have to add, and I talked to Rob at the Courier and they are in the process of putting together a whole centerfold for us from past rodeo history to now with our sponsors, with what's happening. And it will be a keeper in itself with the whole itinerary of that whole week. We've kind of held back a little bit because we're competing with so many other rodeos. There was the top of the Rockies, now there's the Pike's Peak or Bust rodeo. And we are ready to go with our posters and banners and our promo as soon as that's over.
And also, I wanted to add, we're putting together a program. Has everybody ever seen a rodeo program? Anyway, there, they come in all different shapes and sizes, but we really want to incorporate our history, so the history of rodeo, some of our local things, because it used to be a really big deal here. And especially when Paradise Lodge is going on. And so this is going to be a souvenir program and really want it to be part of this community and to advertise this community. So as soon as we get that done, we'll be showing you that.
I was just going to suggest, if you haven't already, certainly contact K-R-D-O, John Carroll. You know, they've been very supportive of our community as they were at the 5th of July. I'm sure they'd help get the word out.
Thank you. We'll do that. John Carroll?
Anybody else? John?
I remember bringing my family up here to Woodland Park mid to late 60s. And there was Saturday afternoon or Sunday afternoon rodeo. It seemed like it was maybe every week during the summer, Sunday afternoon? Yeah. Well attended, very exciting. So was that part of this?
It was, the Youth Trail Stampede. And like I said, this, well, oh, the Paradise, the Paradise Ranches. That was, I don't know if you guys remember, the Paradise Ranches was one of the top dude ranches in the nation. And they had a separate rodeo that the locals also participated in. This was a different rodeo than, the Youth Trail Stampede was usually once a year.
Okay.
But in one, in one more thing about that, at our peak, we had six rodeos a year. We had the Youth Trail Stampede which was professional, the PRCA. And then we had the National Little Bridges Rodeo. We had the National Old Timers Rodeo. We had the Celebrity Rodeo. And we had the Ranch Rodeo. So we've had an all-in-one year. And from being in business here for 51 years, when those six rodeos went away, we have never seen anything come to town that promoted our town and brought our economy to the level that those rodeos did. that those rodeos did.
Well, very exciting. Thank you very much. Any other questions? Look forward to it. The admission and tickets are available. Can you tell us anything about that?
Yes, actually, we have a website, and it's the Youth Trail Stampede Rodeo.
It's Facebook, facebook.com/utealstampede.
Liz is doing that.
And we will have tickets. Our tickets are gonna be five dollars and twelve and under free. We don't have a covered grandstand, and it's a timed event because they don't have any bucket chutes down there. So it's gonna be a timed event. So we've, we've kept the price down so families can come. The mutton busting will definitely bring families because of their kids to ride, and then rodeo for three to four days.
And Sally might have mentioned this. What time will the rodeo end?
Well, and with rodeo, a performance only can take so long, and so when, when those slots fill up, then we run what we call slack. Slack is at eight o'clock in the morning. It's not a charge. We just run the cowboys through as quickly as possible because that's called slack. The rodeo starts at noon, and so it's, or it will end right around four, four-thirty, depending on how long it takes.
We're advertising at twelve to three. If it goes over a little bit, because we have that many cowboys, I guess we'll roll with the punches.
Sounds great. Anything else? Mary-Joe, Marty, thank you very much. See if there's any other public comment here. Anyone have anything?
Murph?
Sure, Murph, sure, come on up and reintroduce yourself.
My name's Elijah Murphy. I live at 251 Upper Glen Drive. I'm also the owner of the Historic Uden. To answer the question about the advertising, I just talked with Mike Fulmer this morning from RMC Distributing in Colorado Springs, and he is going to help me with contacts and everything. They're going to be doing all the media for us, and we're going to advertise at Peterson Air Force Base, the Air Force Academy, and Fort Carson as well, and we'll probably put something in the Colorado Springs Gazette as well to try and get as much participation from the surrounding area as possible.
Grace Murphy.
My problem.
Very much. Anybody else? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sounds exciting. Counsel, no other questions? We'll just call for motion.
I'll move to approve the temporary use permit for overnight camping at 19250 East Highway 24 for the You Pass Saddle Club event.
I second.
Sounds good, Suzanne?
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Sonnier?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Thank you.
Okay. We have no new business tonight. Nobody signed up for public comment. So we'll move on to reports, and I will start with my event sheet. Farmer's Market every Friday through September 30th. I'll see everybody there tomorrow, seven to one. They've been getting great crowds over there. The weather's supposed to be nice and cool tomorrow. Every Saturday through September 17th, free walking tours of History Park and downtown Woodland Park. Call 686-7512 for more information. Friday, July 8th, Movie Above the Clouds at the Midland Pavilion. It's free. It's a family-friendly movie, and will start at sunset, and there will be food available. This Saturday, July 9th, Habitat for Humanity Host Building on Faith at the Loft House, 8:00 AM to noon, and it says, "Come Help Build." That should be fun. Saturday, July 9th, also, Woodland Park Music Series presents Purely Bluegrass in the Midland Pavilion from 11:00 to 1:00, and that too is a free event. One week from tomorrow, Friday, July 15th, is the Chambers Annual Golf Tournament. Always a big turnout and a lot of fun. Saturday, July 16th, Mountain of the Sun Music Festival at Aspen Valley Ranch, and that'll be from noon to seven, and you can buy tickets at the door. Sunday, July 17th, the Woodland Music Series presents the 101st Army Dixieland Band from 1:00 until whenever at the Midland Pavilion, and that event is also free. And then, a week from this coming Tuesday, July 19th, Business After Hours hosted by Anderson Enterprises, 5:30 to 7:00, and that's always a big turnout. For those that did attend, it was my first time this past July 5th. The Symphony Above the Clouds was a phenomenal event with tremendous turnout. Kids, young people, old people, everything but pets, and it was a great event, and I think we raised a lot of money to, to help offset the cost from the symphony, but what a, what a great event for our community. Other than that, I have, I guess, Wally tonight. Can you introduce our student art for us?
He's been practicing all evening.
Yeah, there you go. There you go. You got it damn well. This is a second grader, if you can believe that, Caitlin Dodson from Gateway Elementary School. And as we always say, if anyone wants to have one of these pieces of art in their business, contact the school administration, and there's a number of them, and they'll be glad to help you out. They're, they're beautiful, as you can see. That's all I have today. I, I know that the rest of you might have something. Carol, would you like to start?
Well, in addition to a really wonderful Symphony Above the Clouds, I want to thank David and the entire staff for the Old Fashioned Fourth of July. That was a great day, and I know a lot of work went into that, so my personal thanks to Karen. I thought that was, I brought a lot of folks up from the springs, and I think I can convince them someday to move here, but, but a lot of, I know a lot of effort went into it. It was a very professional job and a lot of fun.
I'll pass that along to Main Street and to Build a Generation. They certainly did the yeoman's work associated with that.
And I've gotta ask, being the baseball guy, how was the baseball game? Did anybody attend? Got canceled?
Oh, it was rained out horribly. Yeah, about 11:00 o'clock, we gathered to stretch and stretch and then stretch some more, because we were all generally old, because it was an old-timey ballgame. But it, the, the field was just covered with water, and unfortunately, we couldn't play. We thought about playing on the artificial turf, but it was, would be too slick. So the group is looking to reset a date in the future, hopefully with drier weather.
Great. That sounded like a fun event. Okay, Carol, anything else? Val?
I wanted to mention a couple things. One, I attended the CML Conference two weeks ago and learned a great deal that should benefit my council service for the community. I attended seminars on Department of Local Affairs, DOLA opportunities, finance and budgeting, DOLA tools for fiscal analysis, running meetings with succinct Roberts Rules, utility services, and Smart Cities apps that are available for Woodland Park potential usage, which I will pursue in this area of my expertise, and land use and water planning. All of these were introductory in nature, but hold great ideas to continue pursuit for the benefit of Woodland Park. At CML, I also met and talked with many city managers, city attorneys, mayors, city council members and trustees. Those extensive discussions were probably even more valuable to discover methods and protocols that fit with common-sense methods and logical conclusions for city council responsibilities and rights. I shall share these findings as opportunity presents itself in the future. Thank you to the citizens for sending me to this CML opportunity. I sincerely mean that. The July, the, number two, the July 5th Symphony Above the Clouds held a nice surprise for me. My wife and I attended for the first time in about five years and discovered that my voice teacher, Amy Mucho, was singing with the symphony. Amy was the voice teacher who convinced me to train to sing opera, which some of you don't know I sing, and gained my audition with Martille Rowland, who's a international opera star of Opera Theater of the Rockies. My prior singing was rock and roll and R&B only, so this was a real divergent for me. I auditioned and earned Ms. Rowland's invitation to join the company of the Opera Theater of the Rockies as an opera chorus beso, that's a real low bass, for which I have enjoyed participating for years. I always loved to hear Amy sing either opera or pop genres. She's an amazing talent. It was really a thrill for us to see her up there.
Val, we have a short meeting tonight. Would you like to? Ken?
I have nothing.
Paul?
I too am very thankful for the efforts that went into all the events this Fourth of July holiday. I attended a few, and they were very good, and the ones that I didn't attend, it was my loss. I deeply appreciate all the work and effort that went into it. I also attended the CML Conference. I am very thankful for the citizens of Woodland Park for sending me. I attended many sessions, and yes, it was very helpful to me to understand the workings of government, and in the future, as I am now, I am thankful for the information that I have and look forward to using it, and just thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thanks, Paul. John?
I have nothing this evening.
Okay, thank you very much. Next on my agenda, I have the city attorney report.
I have nothing for the...
Okay. And last, Mr. Butter.
Thank you, Mayor. We continue to work on the audit information. We're finalizing that, and we should have a concise report back to you at the next meeting. We really have nothing else this evening to share with you, unless you have questions for the staff.
Well, we should at least mention the exciting news about the pool under construction.
Well, it truly is. They started digging a week or so ago, and they've made great progress. They've done quite a bit of demolition on the site. They were actually today doing some excavation for some of the retaining walls that hold the upper parking lot up so that the pool can then be built below that. You'll be pleased to know that the excavator that was selected for the job is a local contractor, and by local, I do mean Woodland Park. It's Lamb Excavating. So Mark Lamb and his team are busy doing that portion of the work for Adelson and Peterson, for the citizens of Woodland Park. So they're underway. We have our first construction update meeting next Tuesday, and we'll be having those every two weeks. It's just gonna be fun to watch the progress being made over there.
David, can we make that then a regular update as you do those bi-weekly updates? Bring that back to the next council meeting?
Sure, absolutely.
And one other question. When will they actually start the turn lane? Would that be after the, close to the end of construction of the facility?
I believe that is the case. They're, they're, I think that was, they're going to get all the site work done, get the building done, and next summer, do the roadway work. It's kind of the last thing. That way, get up, they can do all the paving of the parking lot and of the road at one time, so they just have one mobilization.
Anything else for David? Okay, thank you very much. And we'll move on. I have one letter of comments on written correspondence. I was asked to read this letter. Your Honorable Mayor, this is with great sorrow and grief, I write you this note, but you need to know, my heart was broken when I went to the cemetery, and all the flowers had been stripped from our beloved one's graves. I've lived here all my life and grew up going to the cemetery with my mother and grandmother to rake and clean, show our respect and love, and hear the stories. I probably have more family than anyone in that peaceful old cemetery. My dad built the rock post at the south end of the cemetery. My husband has family, my sister's family, Loughlin family, and Longwell family. Many graves are very old. It's like someone robbed us our time and the love shared with those we have cared so dearly for, but I do understand the need for cleaning. Not everyone cleans and maybe not even be here, so I do thank you for that. Please see that this does not happen again. Cleaning, I understand, but the flowers and mementos, we remember them with, should be left alone. We love and respect our families, and we have a unique, peaceful, beautiful place for them to rest in our Woodland Park, and someday I will be there too. Sincerely, Hildred Davis. That said, I have nothing else. Anything else, Council? This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.